Tribute to the Beatles. The Roy Orbison Experience, featuring Mark Barnett as Roy Orbison, and this year's celebrity guest judge, actor Robert Hayes from Airplane. Cruise Night starts at 5:30 on Brand Boulevard between Milford and Broadway. And it's all absolutely free.
Welcome to The Look Ahead, which covers the meetings and events scheduled this coming week. A listing of city meetings with live air and replay times can be found on GTV6's website, www.glendale.tv, and on the bulletin board airing daily on GTV6. Please note that some of these meetings may be canceled or postponed after the original posting. To confirm, visit the city's website at www.ci.glendale.ca.us, or call the department responsible for that particular meeting. The following meetings take place in city council chambers on Tuesday, July 5. The Glendale Housing Authority and the Glendale Redevelopment Agency will meet consecutively, beginning at 2:30 PM, followed by a special meeting of the city council regarding a review of proposed amendments to Title 30 of the Glendale Municipal Code, and the downtown specific plan relating to the zoning code. The city council will meet at 6:00 PM. Details about the city council meeting are available at 818-548-4844. For information about housing issues, call 818-548-2060. And the number of the redevelopment agency is 818-548-2005. On Wednesday, July 6, the Glendale Planning Hearing Officer will meet at 9:30 AM in Room 105 of the Municipal Services Building. And the Planning Commission will meet in the same room at 5:00 PM. Details on either of these meetings are available at 818-548-2140. And the Glendale Fire Department is currently accepting applications for fire cadets. The recruiting process ends July 6. Go to www.fire.ciglendale.ca.us. On Thursday, July 7, the Committee for a Clean and Beautiful Glendale will meet at 8:30 AM in the Perkins Community Room. Call 818-548-3700 for more information. That afternoon, Design Review Board Number Two will meet at 5:00 PM in Room 105 of the Municipal Services Building. Following this meeting, Design Review Board Number One and Number Two will hold a joint meeting in the same room. Details about DRB are available at 818-548-2140. There are no meetings scheduled on Friday, July 8. On Saturday, July 9, the New Puppy Gallery, in cooperation with the Associates of Brand Library and Art Center, presents Robert Brown Glass and Ceregrafs. Selections from the Brand Library collection of Robert Brown's work will go on view and be available for purchase at the gallery from the opening reception at 7:00 PM through July 31. The gallery is located at 2808 Elm Street, Unit 1, in Los Angeles. Call the Brand Library at 818-548-2051 if you would like more details about the exhibit. Glendale's 18th Annual Cruise Night takes place July 16. Don't travel out of the area for entertainment. Avoid the 405 closure by coming straight downtown to Brand Boulevard to enjoy the biggest car show in Southern California, plus a terrific free concert featuring Paul Revere and the Raiders, The Chantees, Abbey Road, and Mark Barnett. Details are at www.glendellcruise night dot com. The City of Glendale has established a city-community partnership for the purpose of funding Glendale's 2012 Rose Float. All donations are tax deductible, and donors will receive a tax-exempt receipt for filing purposes. If you would like to be a part of this 98-year tradition, donations can be sent to the City of Glendale Finance Department, Room 346, 141 North Glendale Avenue, 91206. Please reference Glendale Rose Float on your check. Keep up on late-breaking events in our city by following us on Twitter at www.twitter.com/myglendale. Sign up today. That's it for this time. Thanks for joining us, and we'll see you next week.
Good evening, and welcome to the July 5, 2011 Meeting of the Glendale City Council. Can we have a roll call, please?
Council members Manukian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Wintaro.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Friedman.
Here. I will ask Councilmember Manukian to lead us in tonight's Pledge of Allegiance.
Please join me in pledging our allegiance to our nation. Ready, begin. Pledge allegiance to the flag. The United States of America. To the Republic where we stand. One nation, united. Invisible with liberty and justice.
Please remain standing for an invocation. This evening, following the anniversary of our Declaration of Independence and our birth as a nation, let us remember the gifts bestowed upon us as citizens and residents of the United States. Let's thank those who sacrifice and dedicate themselves so we may enjoy stability, success, and growth as one people. We ask for guidance for all of the leaders in the community. May they work together for the future of Glendale towards continued prosperity and general harmony in our lives, neighborhoods, and homes. Be with the council as they make the difficult decisions required of them. Grant them wisdom as they deliberate on these issues before them this evening. Amen.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item is our report on the Agenda for July 5, 2011 Regular Meeting of the Glendale City Council is posted on Thursday, June 30, 2011, on the bulletin board outside City Hall. Following that is Presentation and Appointments at 3A is the Agenda Preview for the Meetings of July 12, 2011.
Good evening, Mayor Friedman, members of the City Council. Next week, there will be no Glendale Housing Authority or Redevelopment Agency meetings in the afternoon. However, there is a joint City Council, Redevelopment Agency, and Glendale Housing Authority meeting. At 1 is the Director of Community Development regarding urgency ordinance and other actions authorizing the City of Glendale, and Glendale Redevelopment Agency participate in the alternative voluntary redevelopment program. Moving on to the evening meeting of the Glendale City Council, there are a number of consent items. At 5B is the General Manager of GWP regarding engineering and financial services related to wastewater issues. 5C is the Director of Public Works regarding fiscal year 10/11 slurry seal program. 5D is the Chief of Police regarding U.S. Department of Justice Bulletproof Vest Partnership Program. 5E is the General Manager of GWP regarding computerized maintenance management system software project. And at 5F is the City Attorney regarding agreement between the City of Glendale, City of Pomona, and ISIS JPA for the establishment of a radio system repeater site and upgrading of certain specific radio system components. Under Action Items, there is just one, 8A, General Manager of GWP regarding the Waters SCADA System Upgrade Phase 2 Project. And under Hearings, again, there's just one, at 9A, is the Director of Administrative Services regarding levy and collection of annual assessments for the City of Glendale's North San Fernando Road Corridor Landscape Maintenance District for fiscal year 10/11/12.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item is City Council and Staff Comments. There is one presentation. It was an Agenda, as we do have some students here and delegates from the Republic of Korea if they would like to...
Why don't we do that? Yeah, we have a special group of visitors today who are going to be joining us. Today, they toured our Grayson Power Plant, the Americana, spent some time in Glendale. And we also have Mayor's commendations for three members, one from the South, the Korea Southeast Power Company, a professor from the Hankook University of Foreign Studies, and the student delegation from Hankook University of Foreign Studies. So I'm going to invite Chang Lee and the delegation to come forward, introduce yourselves, and then we'll come up with the Mayor's commendations.
Sure. Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. Let me briefly introduce the delegation to you, and then I'm going to ask them to come up with me here for our opportunity. Hankook University of Foreign Studies teaches over 65 languages, and their graduates are actually successful businesspeople all over the world. And these students are MBA students who wanted to participate in global economy and globalization and wanted to obviously visit the United States. And first city they wanted to visit was Glendale. There are several Glendalean who actually participated in this Hankook University's EMB program here in Southern California as well, thus recognizing this group here. We have another delegation from a power company, which is Korea Southeast Power Company, which is responsible for about 12% of the Korea's power needs. And they are servicing the region where our sister city, Goh Sun, is situated, in Kyungnam Province. And we had an opportunity to visit Americana and also our Grayson Power Plant, and they were impressed. They wanted to establish collaboration between the GWP here and their power company to look for any type of technology sharing in clean energy sectors and so on. So I'd like to, right now, then invite them up to the podium and just have an opportunity to meet all the councilmembers here and maybe do a follow-up. And if you don't mind, they'll have also banner commemorating this event here, so...
Would they like to say a few words, too?
Sure.
Thank you for inviting all of us. Thank you very much.
Do you want to tell us your name?
My name? My name is Juran Kim.
Welcome.
Thank you so much.
We don't want to take up too much of a time, so we can go ahead with the presentation and then maybe follow-up. If you don't mind, if you can all join, join us here for follow-up. Thank you. We have to get permission from...
And then I have the...
You can call up, yeah.
Sam Won Hong? One Young?
Two.
Sam Hong Tsu?
Thank you.
Chang, they can go up there and take pictures this way.
Oh, really? Oh, yeah. You can also maybe we can go stand behind you.
We usually stay down here, but they can go and take pictures from here.
Oh, I see, I see.
사진 찍은 사람 저 위에서 찍어도 되는데요.
아니까 앞다 찍었으니까.
여기 같이 안 찍게?
여기서만 같이 해서.
의원들이랑 여기서 같이. 의원들 다시면 쓰시고, 딴 분들 다 앞에서 그냥 좀. 앞에 있는 사람 무릎 꿇고, 뒤에 있는 사람 쳐고.
남아있는 분들 앞으로 차가워. 빨리빨리 여기 우리.
앞에 있는 사람 안 꼬여.
빨리 야 이거 이렇게 옆에서 미안해요. 뭐? 미안.
I get the medal this.
중간에 한번 저기 뭐.
저희 의원님들을 앞으로 앞으로 오시라고.
저희들 한 줄이 더. 흐르고 얘가 있네.
Down the mayor's.
그리고 저기 의원이 쪽으로 오시라고. 내가 내는 거. 메이어가 앞으로 옆으로. 제 시작이 여자분이 시작이야. 그렇지? 앞으로.
The mayor is the tallest one in here, right?
Almost tall.
자 너랑 같고.
I'm not seeing, that's okay.
자 와투쓰를 파이팅 하고 차가워.
원, 투, 쓰리.
파이팅!
Did we miss something?
자 와투.
Were we supposed to?
원, 투, 쓰리.
파이팅!
Thank you, very.
Thank you. We have a really thriving relationship with our Korean sister cities, and it's very valuable for us culturally, but also in terms of things like scientific exchanges. So I'm glad that this is a relationship that we continue to foster here in Glendale. Mr. Kasakian, what's next?
Next item is City Council and Staff Comments.
Mr. Manukian.
I had a couple items. I had requested P-card information, and I have not received it yet. And I wanted to, we wanted a discussion on the P-cards as well. We also approved the budget, and I have not received the CD for the budget. I would like to request it at this point. I have received letters from community members. I just think that it's important to make them a part of the record. And this one is regarding a notice that was sent out regarding a meeting for Wednesday, June 22, and the notice was mailed out on June 20. And this individual is saying, I don't want to give their names, but is saying that sending out notices on the 20th for a meeting on the 22nd is completely unacceptable because they received it on the day of the meeting. So there was no way they could have planned to attend the meeting. And I would like to make this part of the record so that... I don't know if it's a policy decision that we need to discuss, or...
My question is, if you want to keep their name, you said you didn't want to announce their name, but if you make it part of the public record, you realize that their name is public.
Right. And that's fine if somebody wants to look at them. But I think it's a genuine concern on the part of a community member. We're sending out notices, it should be at least a couple of weeks ahead of time for meetings. And second is a letter that I received today from Larry Hanson. And this is regarding the backflow prevention device. And apparently, we are charging the community for this device, and the community members are responsible for maintaining it, but we're charging them for, and inspecting it, and we're charging them for a monthly fee of $8.71 and an annual fee of $104.52. And he had, there is no option to accept or not to accept this fee. And that I would like to kind of take a look into this and see exactly what it is. And I would like to make this letter part of the record as well, and to find out what is it that was installed, and if it's a city program, I'd like to know more about it. And that's it. And over the weekend, I, there was one, not the bottom one. Don't take all my papers. Over the weekend, I got to, over the July 5 weekend, I got to talk to an individual who raised a concern regarding the City of Glendale's Glendale Water and Power joining the Cal ISO. And he said something that was, that I was not familiar with, that Glendale Water and Power was hiring consultants to determine whether they should join Cal ISO or not. The problem for me is, I don't know if they're hiring consultants or not, but I think policy should be driven by council and not by department heads who are hiring consultants to push policy. So I don't know where this item is, or whether Glendale Water and Power is considering hiring a consultant to join Cal ISO. I'm just bringing up the issue. But unless it's approved by the council, it's okay. But I would like to get a briefing on it. But if it's not by council, I think it should come to the council, because council is the one who makes policy decisions and not department heads by hiring consultants. So, thank you.
Thank you. We will follow up on all the items that Mr. Manukian brought up and get back to all of you on them.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I'd like to have a report or try to establish where are we with the branding efforts.
Oh, yeah. That was, there was an article on that, wasn't there?
Right. So one of the columnists wrote an article. I've been thinking about it for the past few months, so I'd like to know where that is. Then I want to report on a really, really wonderful event, and that was the opening of the Griffith Manor Park, uh, park on Saturday. It was, I think of all of the parks that we've sort of redone, none has gone through the transformation that Griffith Manor went through. It is just night and day. And needless to say, there were all kinds of people there from the neighborhood, and some people are already picnicking, and little kids running around, some of them with soccer balls. The basketball court was going. The staff did a wonderful job on the kind of meeting room. Anyway, it's just a super plus, and it's one that's going to be used by neighbors, by all of the people that live in that area. And during the day, I've got a feeling it'll be used by the employees that work there along Flower Street and some of the other locations. And the second thing was the Montrose Shopping Park had their annual car show, and Mr. Najarian and I were at the top of our game as we inspected all of the classic cars. But it's growing every year, just packed with people, and it spills over to the farmer's market, obviously. But it's a really good show. I'm very happy that they're having the successful show. And they actually have some really nice cars that come to the show, so hopefully next year we'll have an even bigger turnout.
Mr. Najarian.
Thank you. Briefly, I think we all received letters from several residents complaining of the crosswalk, the absence of a marked crosswalk at 9, at the 900 block of East Broadway. I think that was brought to Public Works' attention, and there's something in the works to remedy, or at least mitigate, some of the dangers there. But it never really obviates the need for all the pedestrians to be extra careful whether you are in or you're outside of a crosswalk. Please be careful. And just because you're in a marked crosswalk, please don't assume that the vehicles know that you're there or can expect someone to cross, so be extra careful. In fact, some of the reasons that marked crosswalks are not put in is because it does give the pedestrian a false sense of security when they cross the street. You're much more fearful and watchful when you're trying to cross an unmarked crosswalk because you fully appreciate the dangers facing you when you try and cross that road. And that's all.
Weaver.
That reminded me, would you have staff also look at, on Verdugo Road at Glorieta Park? It's a long straightaway there. The owners of Palace Licker tell me that cars really speed there because it is a straightaway. In fact, they told me about a family was crossing, they were mid-block crossing, car coming north, didn't go past them, went on the other side around their back into the other traffic lanes, because they just had to get over there going 30 seconds faster. So that's another one that might be in line for some kind of device.
Thank you. I attended a few events this week. Glendale Crime Stoppers had their annual fundraising picnic last week. This is a group that's a volunteer organization that raises money to help law enforcement efforts in Glendale. It seemed like it was very well-attended. I think that they made a lot of money on the sales of their hamburgers and hot dogs, as well as on their raffles, raffle tickets. So that was a nice event. On Thursday night, I attended the Glendale Pops performance, which was at the Americana. It was a free performance. It was fabulous. They had amazing, the band is amazing, or the orchestra is amazing. The vocalists were incredible. It was a free event, open to the entire community, and there were hundreds and hundreds of people there enjoying it. And it was just a great atmosphere, people standing around out in the beautiful summer weather and watching live music. So I do recommend to everybody that when you see the notices for upcoming Glendale Pops performances, that you go. Some of them are at the Americana, and some of them are at the Alex Theater. I believe they're doing six performances this year, so a lot of art and music and culture available in Glendale this year. I also attended the Griffith Manor Park opening. The park looks beautiful. For those of you who haven't been there or don't know where it is, it's on Flower Street. And it's on a street that's an industrial, commercial street, but there are single-family residences surrounding that block. And a lot of the people that were there for the park opening had walked from their homes, people with dogs, people with children, and everyone was just so happy that all of the amenities that the community asked for in a series of community meetings, like new clean bathrooms, like upgraded security features, moving the parking lot up to the front of the property so it can be seen better by the police, a new basketball court, water-saving features, new community building, all of that was given to the community, and everybody seemed really, really pleased with what was done. Lastly, I also attended the Montrose, 4th of July, Block Park Party, and it was a lot of fun. And despite the heat, it was blazing hot, but the cars were hotter. And there were just hundreds and hundreds of people out there on that hot pavement enjoying the vehicles. And I don't know much about classic cars, but I like them, and I like the colors in particular, particularly the ones that are sparkly. So even someone like me who doesn't know much about cars can enjoy being out there with everybody. And I just want to make a little comment about that particular article that was in the news press about the branding project. One of, the reporter made a lot of points, you know, I don't agree with him on most things, but there were a lot of valid points. But one thing that he said that I felt was honestly a cheap shot, which was that if we didn't spend the money on this, we wouldn't have to lay off our employees. And I just want the reporter, Gary Herta, to know that that pot of money that's used for redevelopment cannot be used to support the general fund. So even if we were not to spend money on that project, or any of the other projects that redevelopment spends money on, we couldn't dump that money into the general fund and use it to support our employees. And if Mr. Herta has any questions about how anything in the city functions, I recommend that he calls us, tries to get his facts straight. We're available to speak to him, I'm always available to speak to him, or any of the reporters from the news press, I'm sure that staff would speak to him as well. His last column, he talked about how the city council was going to demolish the Jewel City Bowl. Well, it's not the city council that's working on the new courthouse project, it's the County of Los Angeles, and it's a private transaction between them and the Jewel City Bowl, and city council has nothing to do with it. So once again, before he accuses the city council of doing something, he should get his facts straight. I think he owes that to the public who reads his commentary. Okay, if there's no other comments, do we have any staff comments? Okay, if there's no other comments, do we have any staff comments?
Okay, next item, please.
Next item is consent items following our routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of the council or audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motions are proposed.
Mr. Manukin?
Like to pull five B and E, please.
Okay, do we have a motion for the remainder of the consent?
I'll move the remainder.
Second.
And that was for five B and E?
B as in moi and E as in?
Thank you.
E.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmembers Manukin?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Montero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Friedman?
Yes. Okay, can we have five B, please?
Five B is General Manager of Glendale Water and Power regarding annual purchase order contract with Badger Meter Inc. for the purchase of miscellaneous water meters. That B1 is resolution dispensing with competitive bidding and authorizing execution of a new annual purchase order contract with Badger Meter Inc. for three years in an amount not to exceed three hundred thousand dollars.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Manukin, do you have a question in particular?
Yes, I, yes, I do. Why are we dispensing with competitive bidding?
Uh, Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, we?
Can you introduce yourself, please, Mr. Lynn?
I'm sorry, Steve Lynn's Assistant General Manager of Supply for Glendale Water and Power. In 2005, Glendale Water and Power standardized its water meters and went to the Badger Meter. Badger Inc. is the only company that sells this particular meter and so there's nobody else to get it from and that's why we're going with Badger.
Doesn't Rockwell also have similar meters that fit in the same place?
Uh, getting into technical discussions about the meter, I'll invite staff up.
Okay.
My understanding is the standard is Badger and they're the only ones that make it.
Hi, my name is Ken Ha, I'm at the Glendale Water Department and Rockwell, I believe, is, we standardized with Badger and so Rockwell is a different type of meter that during 2005 that we?
But isn't it all standard and all the meters fit in the standard thing and Rockwell produces one as well? My, my only concern is that we're not, we're not being competitive and since we're only contracting with Badger, we can be overcharged. So, isn't it always better to have two suppliers so that it's more competitive rather than one with, with no competitive bidding?
Actually, in this case, it's not and the reason is, it's kind of like a Southwest Airlines where they, they fly the same airplane so that they have the same parts for all one plane. If we keep switching back and forth between different types of meters, then it causes all sorts of administrative problems and inventory problems with having meters available for repairs and it was for technical reasons that we standardized on one meter and Badger was the one that we went with back in '05 and so now the vast majority of our meters, meters are Badger. If we start now getting competitive bids from others, then you end up mixing and matching and in the long run, it costs you more money.
Aren't they standard?
Well, they're standard in the sense that they all will fit on one pipe size, but they're, they're, our standard is Badger and I, I mean, I guess I would defer to staff on why technically it's the standard, but right now, all of our meters are Badger.
What happens when Badger, not when, but if something happens to Badger and they can't provide the meters anymore?
Then we'll have to get them from someone else.
Well, isn't it better to have two suppliers than one?
Well, this gets back to?
And see what the bidding, what, what kind of pricing we're going to get from Rockwell as well as Badger?
Oh, if we get it from Rockwell, then at five programming, because we have the AMI programming, so if you get it from Rockwell, then we have to?
Reprogram it?
Yeah, a little bit differently, so it's not, not going to work efficient, you know, if we stand with one company.
Okay, well, I don't want to, I don't want to belabor the point, but I don't, I don't like dispensing with competitive bidding. I think we should always have backups to our suppliers and if there's any way we can use more than one supplier to keep the inventory competitive or what we're paying for the inventory competitive, I think we should, we should do so, so.
No, we appreciate that and we do actually, when we enter into a sole source, we try to figure out ways to check the market to make sure that they're keeping their prices down. In this case, they are not raising their prices from the last three-year contract, so we'll have another three-year contract at the same price.
Still a three hundred thousand dollar contract, so.
Correct.
All right.
If there's no further discussion, does somebody want to make a motion?
Oh, five B.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmembers Manukin?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Montero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Friedman?
Yes, next item, please. Five D, I believe?
Five.
Five E.
E. Five E is General Manager of Glendale Water and Power regarding annual authority for the purchase or sale of energy services. That E1 is a resolution approving renewal of annual authorization for a senior manager or is designated to enter into contracts for the purchase or sale of energy services not to exceed five years, dispensing with competitive bidding and ratifying contracts for the purchase or sale of energy services made and entered into from July 1st through July 5, 2011.
Madam Mayor, Members of Council, once again, Steve Lynn's AGM and GWP. This is our annual contract authorization for all of our energy and related services, gas hedging. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Well, it says annual authority for the purchase or sale of energy services, however, in the description, it says that enter into contracts for the purchase of sale of energy services not to exceed five years, so if it's annual, why is it five years?
Well, we?
Not to exceed five years, I understand, but?
Yeah, our, our hedging program currently runs out to thirty-six months and sometimes we do deals that are even longer, but that's why we'll, we'll buy a quarter at a time, we'll buy, we may buy a quarter.
I, I just want to, I just want to make sure that we're not signing a five-year contract because it says annual, annual authority for the purchase of energy and in the description, it says not to exceed five years, I just want to make sure that it's a one-year.
It actually is a five-year.
Okay.
And it gives us the ability?
How can it be annual if it's five-year?
It's an annual authorization to enter into contracts up to a term of five years, so that during that one-year period, you can buy gas or electric on a time horizon out five years.
Okay, so?
Our hedging program, for example, is thirty-six months, so we couldn't?
So the contracts you're purchasing are five-years, but the?
The authority only lasts one year.
Authority only lasts five, okay.
Correct. Semantics.
All right, it's not clear, so I have to ask.
Ms. Friedman, we've been at this for a number of years now and I know we contract out, et cetera. I'd like to have a report or some analysis of how we're doing financially. I know we're, I assume, making some money in these trades and so forth, but I'd like to get some feel for what it is that we're making or?
Financially, with respect to the whole trading operation or specific consultant or?
No, no, no.
No, the trading.
Yeah, I mean, year-to-date, actually, we're now in a, a new year.
Year-to-date, you have nothing.
That's right. Year-to-date, last year, we were at about five, around numbers around five million dollars.
Right, so I'd like to have some numbers to see.
And if I, if I may add comparative numbers, not just one year, but?
Sure.
As far back as we can, not twenty years, but maybe five-year report.
Okay.
Okay. I'll move five E.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Councilmembers Manukin?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Montero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Friedman?
Yes, next item, please.
Next item would be oral communications, but this will be the portion reserved for our community announcements.
Okay, I have three cards. First card, LaShannon Lewis, followed by Arlene Vidor.
Good evening. My name is Shannon Lewis. I'm here to discuss really briefly invitation to the Vanguardian Community Forum that is held every Thursday at Foxy's on Colorado across from the Americana. On the agenda this Thursday is all about the Statement of Economic Interest because a lot of people don't know much about it, so that's what's going to be up for debate and conversation. Since it's held every Thursday, we also have agenda laid out for the 14th and the 21st. On the 14th, there will be discussion on how the budget and fee structure will make Glendale even less business-friendly while it paves the way for new special tax districts. On the 21st, which is the Thursday after that, we'll be talking about smart meters and more. Interested parties can contact Barry Allen at 818-243-1502. You can also email Barry at the email address below. Again, this is every Thursday, 8:00 AM at Foxy's on Colorado across from the Americana. Thank you.
Arlene Vidor, followed by Leon Mayer.
Thank you. My name is Arlene Vidor. I'm here to make an announcement on behalf of the Brand Library Associates. We are going to be sponsoring a show, which is a fundraiser for the Brand Library. We're featuring the works of Robert Brown, who was one of Glendale's most preeminent, maybe California's most preeminent painters, printmakers and glassmakers. And the show is going to be graciously hosted for us by the New Puppy Art Gallery in Los Angeles and the opening for the show is this week, on July 9th. Mr. Brown, as some of you may know, his entire collection of work was donated to the Associates of the Brand Library very generously by his daughter upon his passing and we now own his collection and we've been encouraged to sell it so that we can share it with, with the public. So all proceeds go directly to the Associates of Brand Library and we, of course, put the money back into events at the Brand Library. The show is going to, this is a picture, actually, this is the postcard that we sent out to people and this is a picture of Mr. Brown in 1952, I think, rendering a mural for the Beverly Hilton Hotel. There is a photograph of this mural, it's the only one in existence and there's a missing piece, it's a six-part photograph and there's one piece that's missing and we're desperately trying to find it, so there will be more news about that coming up. But anyway, he was a very prolific artist and we're going to be featuring his work at this extraordinarily beautiful gallery. The opening reception again is this Saturday, July 9th, from 7:00 PM to 11:00. And just so that you all know, this is not in Glendale, but the gallery owner is a member of the Associates of the Brand Library and a big fan of the library, so he has put a lot of time and effort into organizing this show for us. And you can get to the gallery, it's at 2808 Elm Street in Los Angeles, you just proceed down San Fernando Road South, past the two freeway and the gallery is on Elm Street near San Fernando Road between the two freeway and Figueroa Avenue. So we hope we can see you all there this Saturday, July 9th. As I said, it's going to be a beautiful show and all of the proceeds from the sale of Mr. Brown's work go to the Brand Library Associates in support of the library. Our goal is to net ten thousand dollars at the show, which is probably a pretty ambitious goal, but that's what we set for ourselves, so we hope to see you all there. Thank you.
And the show is up until July 31st?
The show is up to July 31st and if you go on the gallery's website, which I believe is www-newpuppyla.com, you can find the details and the timings, but July 31st, so it'll be up for a month.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Leon Mayer is my last card.
Good evening, Mayor Friedman, Members of the Council and staff. My name is Leon Mayer. I'm a member of the Friends of the Glendale Public Library and hearing about this previous artist, artist who is from Glendale, I am announcing a program on, it's supposed to go up on the screen. Vince Bullosi will be at the library on Wednesday, July 27th at 7:00 Central Library to talk about his newest book, Divinity of Doubt, The God Question. And I can't help thinking that here we had this talent from Glendale from 1950 and Vince Bullosi used to live in Glendale, he's lived in Pasadena and Glendale for the last thirty, forty years and he's a tremendous talent that's still alive and with us and we're going to have him at the library on the 27th. Now, Vince, for some of you who might not have heard of him, he was the famous prosecutor in the Manson case and he wrote a book called Helter Skelter, which became the most famous and is still the most famous, not only nationwide but worldwide, true story about crime. And he's also written a book called Reclaiming History, the story of the assassination of President Kennedy in 1963, which put the conspiracy theorists to, to rest. And he's also written other books and he was a famous prosecutor even before the Manson case, he'd won 22 or 25 murder cases without a loss, he had convictions in 105 out of 106 felony cases and he is famous. And his book, Divinity of Doubt, The God Question, goes through the gamut, if I can use the word gamut, of the various religions we have in our world. And frankly, it's critical of the theistic religion and the agnost, and the atheist and he's an agnostic and he has on his side Clarence Darrow, Charles Darwin, Albert Einstein, Socrates and Gertrude Stein. And this will be a really interesting session at the library. Larry Zarian is going to have him interviewed on the 14th of July, that's channel 380 and Larry and him are going to have a very interesting evening going over the book and all the important issues that Vince Bullosi raises in his book. So I'll come back here again before the 27th and I urge you to try to put this on your calendar and put Larry Zarian's program for the 14th, channel 380 on your calendar and thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That was my last card, what's next, please?
Next, under action items, 8A is Director of Public Works regarding public sale of surplus city-owned properties located at 1652 Gladys Drive and 765 Glenmore Boulevard through the, through a public auction. 8A1 is motion accepting bid and authorizing city attorney to open escrow and 8A2 is motion rejecting bids.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, at this time, we'll go to Chris Sansoni, legal counsel for Public Works, to give you an update.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Members of Council. I'm here to report that we have had no bidders on this property at all. We have advertised on the web, we've put out public notices, we've published in the local newspapers, but unfortunately, there have been no bidders and as, at this time, we ask that this matter be taken off calendar. There are some options that staff would like to consider.
Okay.
As to either rehabilitating the property or putting the sale price at a different figure, that all needs to be analyzed and we would like to bring this back to council at a, at a very, at a time very soon.
Okay, is there any discussion?
Can we make a soccer field out of this lot?
Only if they want to play completely vertically.
Ski slope.
Ski slope, maybe. Okay.
Thank you.
You don't need to vote or anything like that.
Take the calendar, the matter off calendar, Madam?
We'll take it off calendar and we'll await your, your options.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item is the five-minute portion of oral communications. Again, discussion is limited time, it's not part of this agenda, each speaker will be allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to a speaker, but there will be no debate or decision and the city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
Thank you, I have three cards. If anybody else wishes to speak in this portion of oral communications, please turn your card in now. First card is Barry Allen, followed by Mike Mohill.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, staff, I'm Barry Allen. Several things, I did, I was going to talk about something else first, but hearing that the council makes policy, I think it's great. I thought it just accepted the policy was given by different department heads because I think that's what happened when the people of the city of Glendale are going to be cheated out of their current ambulance service, the advanced life support. It's going to be cheated in several fashions. Of course, these weren't really discussed. The fact that over sixty people will be hired, that won't be enough, it'll require overtime, overtime will require benefits, benefits will be required, calpers, I just, that's just a minor money thing. Then, of course, you have the situation where that paramedic engine, and I know nine is better than four, which is absolutely nonsense, because that paramedic engine is going to have to follow that basic life support ambulance to the hospital. After all, one of its people, a? After all, one of its people, a paramedic, is going to be riding with a patient. And now that engine will not return for almost one hour. Presently, the engines are back in 16 minutes. So that takes an engine out of its district, a paramedic engine. Then, of course, you have the situation where, when there is a fire, and three engines report, and an RA reports, what are you going to do when you've just eliminated three paramedic engines? Are you going to bring equipment up from other move-ups? Because when you bring up a move-up, what happens? That district is left unattended. So that's just one of the things that I saw that this council just accepted the policy that was presented by the fire department. Then, of course, we were looking at one of the other issues that I brought up during the redevelopment agency meeting last week, and it had to do with the fees that the city council set for the members of the redevelopment agency at $350 a meeting, assuming that the numbers that were given to the city council, that the city of Glendale had a population in excess of 200,000, and we've now seen that those numbers weren't correct. And we've shown that, and the city council had the same information that Vanguard had relative to the number of dwelling units that were built and the number of electric meters. And it was totally inconsistent, where the population increased from 194,000 to 207,000. That's what, 13,000 new residents? Where did we put them? But yet, this council and previous councils, sitting as a redevelopment agency, have moved their compensation from $30 a meeting to 350. Now, I did hear Mr. Howard say, "Well, we can't diminish the amount that the redevelopment agency is being paid." I don't think he's right, because October 1st, if there's no redevelopment agency, what's going to happen? Do you still get paid? I think that is something that outside council will have to look at, as opposed to the present city attorney, because there's too much invested in it. And I think the public, the public needs to hear that from an outside agency. Then, of course, we have the 700 forms that you heard my associate speak of, that will be the topic on Thursday. And right now, we're looking at 700 forms from the MTA, the Metropolitan Water District, from SCAG, from numerous of the fast rail, because the city doesn't have that information, which means, and we're also asking the FPPC to make it a one-stop filing, to make it so simple for the city council members to be able to have their forms filed in one location because, after all, you wouldn't be sitting on those boards if you weren't a city council member. So our recommendation to the FPPC at the interested persons meeting would be that that change is made. Thank you. I'm Barry Allen.
Thank you. Mike Mohill, I don't see him.
Councilman, my name is Harry Zavos. I'm a citizen of Glendale, and usually, I don't like to use names, but tonight, I must do so. At the June 21st meeting, Councilman Najarian suggested that oral communication change its name to State Your Hatred. He mentioned four people as exemplifying that, and talked about three of them, Margaret Hammond, Mr. Hooker, and Herbert Milano. At the next council meeting, Margaret Hammond and Lenore Salies took him to task over these personal attacks, and he responded that he was disturbed by a despicable racial slur against Armenians that was made from the audience during oral communication. And Mr. Najarian, I couldn't agree with you more. That was indeed a hateful, hateful remark. Mr. Najarian justified these attacks, and labeling these people as full of hate, because he was disturbed by that racial slur, and he couldn't dust it off, but he had to speak up. As one who is proud of his ethnic heritage, I have no doubt as to Mr. Najarian's pride in his. I do not doubt that he is sincerely and deeply offended by hateful attacks on Armenians, and has moved to speak out against him. I believe that. But on June 21st, he never used the actual word hate with regard to Mr. Hooker. He did, was highly critical of him. With Margaret Hammond, he did use a word, and said she exuded hatred when she spoke about those people. With regard to Herbert Milano, by count, he used the word eight times and spent most of his time talking about Mr. Milano. Now, I highly know Margaret Hammond from interacting with her at public meetings, but if my memory serves me correct, she was a staunch supporter of a good friend of mine for city office who happens to be Armenian. On the other hand, I do know Mr. Milano as a personal friend, and have socialized with him, and have had coffee with him, and I do not detect any ethnic hatred in this man for any group, let alone Armenians. Indeed, I would have all of you, including Mr. Najarian, look at the April 3rd Masise Post, an Armenian weekly that is also online, to see an article published by Mr. Milano there, a very moving article about the Armenian genocide. And if you go to that article, you'll also see that his daughter was one of only two non-Armenians in her classic Glendale high school that took the Armenian language program. Now, I believe that elected officials, in their public comments, have to be more careful about labeling people who disagree with them as haters in the context of trying to defend attacks on Armenians. I believe that, because it does a disservice to many of them, like Mr. Milano, who quite is 108 directions, and the other direction in terms of that, is very sympathetic to what the Armenian people were put through during the genocide. It can unfairly tarnish their reputation with some people. And more importantly, Mr. Najarian, it can take, and I want to emphasize this, what I sincerely believe is a deep and abiding concern about negative comments, hateful comments made against Armenians, and make it appear counterfeit, even though it's genuine, because it makes it look like a political ploy to be able to attack people with whom you disagree. And frankly, you're smart in that. It just doesn't do you any political good.
Thank you. I'm going to close oral communications. Do we have any council responses? Mr. Najarian?
Just to respond to Mr. Zavos, I never stated that Mr. Milano's hatred was a hatred against any particular ethnic group, and I believe my comments are well-recorded on that particular date. However, I did state against whom I felt Mr. Milano had that hatred. I think I was probably at the top of his list. I don't think anyone can doubt that. He has most recently referred to me as a cockroach, as to lower than a cockroach. I felt he had a disdain, let's use the word disdain, because maybe hatred gets us a little on edge, a disdain for the actions of the city council as a whole. He had a disdain towards the city unions and their current contracts. He had a disdain towards the city manager and other department heads. But I never stated he had a disdain toward the Armenians. I didn't suggest that everyone is stating the same hatred during that portion of oral communications. I would perhaps clarify that there's a different flavor of disdain from each of the prior speakers. As far as Margaret goes, I don't want to get into what Margaret's issues are. Privately, I can speak with you and explain to you some eyewitness issues that I have had with her. But no, Mr. Milano, I do not believe as any ethnic bigotry or any racism at all. So if it came out like that, it was a mistake. Perhaps I was following too closely with his comments to Mr. Hooker's. But just for the record, that's what I meant to say if it was not clearly conveyed.
Okay, any other comments? We have a lot of time. It's not even 7:00 o'clock yet. Nobody wants to pontificate about anything in particular?
Okay, let me get my book out.
Not you, anybody else.
Like we adjourn.
Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you.